Call to order the regular city council meeting for Monday, October 19th, 2015. If you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Gruder is excused. Mayor Protem Weed?
Here.
Council members Brown?
Here.
Ketchmar?
Here.
Bates?
Here.
Sharaki?
Here.
Frida?
Here.
Councilmember Extrem is excused. We have a quorum.
First item that will take up on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the 10:05 2015 regular city council meeting and the October 7th 2015 general government committee meeting. Are there any corrections? Hearing none? Could I have a motion? Councilman Bates?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I recommend we approve the October 5th 2015 regular city council meeting and the October 7th 2015 general government committee meeting.
Second.
Second from Councilman Ketchmar. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bates?
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar?
Aye.
Councilmember Frida?
Aye.
Councilmember Sharaki?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
The next item is council members announcements. Do we have any? Councilman Bates?
Being Scotty's not here, Public Works will be at 4:30 Wednesday, four o'clock Wednesday of this week.
And we have planning commission here tomorrow evening at seven in this chamber.
Anything else? The next item is the adoption of the agenda and the consent agenda. Doug, would you review the consent agenda items, please?
Consent agenda for tonight, first item is to authorize the mayor's signature on a state historic fund grant. This is the, with the State of Colorado Historic Fund. And we reviewed this at the October 7th General Government Committee. The grant funds will be used to replace the roof on the Rudd House over at the museum. The project, the total amount of the project is $79,580. Seventy-three percent of this, or $58,580, will be reimbursed through the State Historic Fund to the city. The remaining $21,000, which would be about 26% of the total project amount, will be the city's match for this project. We did budget this and anticipated this in the 2015 budget. Next item is resolution number 20, 2015. This resolution authorizes the transfer of budgeted funds within the 2015 budget. The funds are the general fund, the park fund, the quality of life fund, water fund, the stormwater fund. This is an action that the city council takes every year, takes place every year at this time. Next item is to authorize the city administrator's signature on an engagement letter. This letter would be for the purposes of starting the process of developing a downtown development authority. We reviewed this at the 9/23, or the September 23 Public Works Committee. And this would be an amount up to, we anticipate now, $25,000. Potentially, it could involve a couple of different elections for the downtown development authority and the creation process for that authority. Next item are the bids, the one bid for tonight, which is 36 of 15. This would be for an HVA system or unit at the Public Works Department. This would be to J&amp;L Heating and Cooling of Canyon City in the amount of $8,450. This was reviewed by the General Government Committee at its October 7th meeting and recommended at that time. This would be for a new heating and cooling unit that's replacing an old, non-working unit at the public works facilities. There were four bids, or four that were solicited, one bid was received. And again, these funds are included in the 2015 budget. And then lastly, our list of bills for the last two-week payable period.
Thanks, Doug. Are there any additions or corrections? Can I get a motion? Councilman Bates?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I recommend we approve the agenda and consent agenda.
Second.
Second from Councilman Ketchmar. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Could you call the roll, please?
Bates?
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Sharaki?
Aye.
Frida?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Next item is the administrators' report. So we'll turn that over to Doug.
Just one item to report on tonight, on sales tax revenues. The sales tax revenues increased from $521,000 in September of 2014, so a year ago, for the previous month. They increased to $536,000 in September this year, so that's a 2.9% increase from a year ago.
That's actually really good. I read an article in the Gazette a couple of days ago. Colorado spring sales tax revenue for the past month is down compared to last year. So...
Our revenue was down, it still was an increase, but it was down compared to what it was in September of last year. So it's just something that we'll continue to watch and hope for the best.
All right. The next item is ordinance number 11, series of 2015, on second reading, citing final assessments for Public Improvement District. Kathy, would you read by title?
This is the bill for ordinance number 11, series of 2015, an ordinance approving the total cost of improvements in Public Improvement District 2014-01 in the city of Canyon City, Colorado, approving and confirming the apportionment of said total cost among the several specifically benefited lots and parcel in said district, assessing the apportion share of said total cost against each such lot and parcel, prescribing the manner for which payment and collection of such assessments, and declaring an emergency.
Could I get a motion? Councilman Bates?
Yeah, I make a recommendation, we approve ordinance number 11, series 2015, on second reading.
Second from Councilwoman Frida. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bates?
Aye.
Councilmember Frida?
Aye.
Councilmember Sharaki?
Aye.
Ketchmar?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
The next item is a public hearing, an application for a special event liquor permit for the Fremont Center for the Arts on December 12th. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for a report from the city clerk.
Mayor Protem Weed and members of council, this is John Stone, who's representing the Fremont Center for the Arts, who has applied to this council for a special event liquor permit for December 12th, for a holiday spirits of art appreciation event. This event is scheduled between 6:00 PM and 8:30 PM at the Arts Center. Notice of this public hearing was done by posting the premises at 505 Macon. This event is their year, end-of-year appreciation to Fremont County residents for their support of the arts and will include a wine tasting with live music and food. Individuals 21 years of age and up will receive a wristband and those underage participants will receive a black X on their hand. Many volunteers of the Arts Center has attended the training that's been offered by the city and they will assist around the perimeter in patrolling the event. Upon review of the application, the appropriate fees have been submitted, the diagram of the premises meets the filing requirement, the applicant has control of the premises through ownership and the corporation, is in good standing with the Secretary of State. So with that, I would open up to any questions council may have of the applicant.
Councilwoman Frida?
Good evening, John.
Good evening.
Are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
I will answer that question after. I thank you all for considering our application. And I think I'm somewhat familiar with the code and I think the folks at the, at the Arts Center are also.
Yeah, you could probably recite these in your sleep, right?
I could probably recite these questions, but I'll let you do that.
Is there a copy of the Liquor Code on file with your organization?
Yes, there is.
And how many volunteers do you plan on having for this event?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, but let's talk about specifics who might be handling liquor issues. Liquor issues as far as, you know, entrance and all that will be handled by board members who have, have attended the training, including myself. Liquor itself, or wine itself, will be distributed by the staff from the wineries that will be attending the event.
Okay, so how, well, I guess, well, go ahead. How will they be trained on the Liquor Code and liquor laws?
Yeah, all fairly well-trained.
Right. Are you fully aware that you are responsible for compliance with the Colorado Liquor Code and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your organization as well as future licensing?
I certainly am.
Very well. You want to plug your event?
Thank you. May I speak a little bit about the event?
Please do.
All right. Kathy pretty well went through it. It's the spirit of the season. It is an appreciation night for the folks, including you all, that have supported the Arts Center. It's going to include wine tasting. It also will include live painting. Three artists, Tom Lockhart, Gloria Countryman, and Sally Mathrow will be there painting. And those, the results of that work will be available for a live auction toward the end of the event at eight o'clock. Where, the tickets will be $10 if purchased in advance, which will include 10 tickets, which are good, each for 10 samples of wine. If you buy your ticket at the door, it will be $12. You have any, you have any questions about the event?
No further questions. Sounds like fun.
I have a question.
All right, well, you're all welcome to 10.
You have a question.
Quick question, Mr. Stone, will they be serving food?
Yes, absolutely. There'll be, there'll be heavy orders.
And is this a new event?
Yes, it is.
In line for fundraiser for the Fremont Center for Arts?
It's, it was, it is a, it is a new event. It's in conjunction with the very successful invitational exhibit that we, that we have held. This is our second year, it was very successful last year. Initially, it was conceived as a way to add to that event, you know, because we do make money when art, art is sold and when tickets are sold to come in, to, to see the exhibit. But as time went on, it became clear, we might make a couple of bucks doing something else at the event itself. So that's, that's our goal, is to ban that. You know, we'll see, it's the Christmas, it's the holiday season and, you know, it's tough doing that, but we'll see how, how well it goes. We're anticipating a nice crop.
Thank you.
Are there any further comments from council? Are there any comments from the audience? Okay, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mayor Protem, I move that we approve this application, application for special event liquor permit for Fremont Center for the Arts at 505 Macon Avenue on December 12th.
Second. Second from Councilman Bates. Is there any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Frida?
Aye.
Councilmember Bates?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Sharaki?
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you.
The next item is a public hearing on the 2016 proposed budget. I will open the public hearing and ask for a report from our finance director, Harry Patel.
Doug is going to start.
Yeah, I think that, you know, we wanted to maybe start tonight by putting the, I guess we have the lights here. Thank you, Lisa. Putting the budget into a little bit of perspective, you know, the budget is a document that the city use for planning for the, for the coming year, for all of our financial matters. But it actually goes beyond our financial matters. It really is kind of planning the direction that the city council has laid out for the future of the community. And this, this budget actually started, the development of this budget actually started, I think, as the, as the council members know, at least the council members that were there at that time, back in, in really late January, early February of 2015, when the city council holds its, its annual retreat. And at that time, the city council really laid out the direction that they wanted staff following, not only for budget, but also for a work program for 2015 and actually beyond. So it's guided, that, that retreat, the direction the council gave, is guiding not only our financial planning, but the work that we actually do on behalf of all the citizens of the community. And the, the policies that the council laid out at that time, in general, were as, as on the screen, so people that are maybe watching at home can see these, and I'll just kind of go through and summarize them very quickly. But essentially, the council said, we want to continue to provide consistent and effective delivery of services for the community. We want to continue to do the services, provide the services that we've been providing. We want to continue to provide them effectively and efficiently and affordably, but to do them very well. We want to keep our fees and charges at current levels. This is one that, water fees, for example, is a fee that we've held at, at a very flat rate for the past several years. Last year, we had to increase it because it just got to the point that we were going to have to raise that, that charge. But again, this year, we went back to keeping them at, at a flat rate. So we, the council does not want to increase fees and charges on our citizens any more than we need to. So the goal was to keep things flat, keep them at current, current levels, and hopefully that'll help our, our community out. There will be probably sometime in the future, when costs increase, that we'll have to address that, but for the foreseeable future, next year, keep them at the current levels. Keeping our staff levels at, at, at current levels as best we possibly can. We do not want to, I think the council has said, we do not want to expand the, the government anymore than we need to. We need to continue to look for efficiencies wherever possible. I think that it's been mentioned that here over the past, oh, six years or so, our staffing levels have been cut about a little over 10%. We want to continue to keep them sort of at those levels and be just as efficient as we possibly can. We want to strive to put more funding into capital projects and improvements. This is a, a policy or goal that the city council started back, really in 2012, and Harry will kind of go through this as, as he gives his presentation. But we really want to try to get more money into projects, capital projects and improvements, things that will improve our community, more so than, say, into staffing or personnel costs. Obviously, personnel is a big part of what we do, but, but projects and community improvements are very important to the future of this community and something that the council felt we need to get more money into, and that has been accomplished here over the past few years. Getting the most out of our equipment. We obviously have a substantial amount of equipment that we use to provide the services to our community, whether it's police cars, whether it's vacos, you know, whatever it may be. So the city council has said, we need to get the most out of that equipment that we possibly can. And so our goal is not to be requesting new equipment because it would be a nice thing to have or it'd be convenient, but we want to make sure we're getting the most out of what we have before we even think about something new. Remain competitive in the marketplace and, and, you know, we've heard here in recent times, the salary issues. I think that we've tried to deal with those. We've gone through a pretty comprehensive salary assessment and we've looked at the other communities that are out there that are very similar to Canyon City, similar in terms of size, similar in terms of incomes that the people in those communities have compared to our community. And so we've tried to make sure that our salaries are set in comparative, in comparison with the salaries that those communities pay. We've also tried to make sure that we are, are being responsible and financially, and is financially feasible in the maintenance of our infrastructure. We know that our infrastructure, we talk about roads, obviously, that's, that's one of the big ones, but that's not the only one. We have buildings that we have to take care of. We have water lines that are under those roads that have to be taken care of, and so on. So there are many things that, that we have to, to try to take care of, and the, and the city council said, we need to, to, to be taking care of those, all of those infrastructure items. And obviously, streets is something that, that is getting a lot of conversation right now, but, but we're trying to work to be just as financially responsible as we can in the maintenance of that infrastructure. Ensure that all facilities are operated as efficiently as possible, eliminating redundancies in our equipment, our processes, try to minimize our costs. We have gone through a, a discussion here recently, for example, dealing with our, the energy use that we have in our facilities. We're going to be looking at that in more detail as we go forward into next year. But all of our facilities, we need to continue to operate efficiently and to make sure we're, we're, you know, spending the money as, just as wisely as we possibly can with regards to, to those facilities. The city council has set a policy, a direction for our community, that we want to have a safe community, that we want to provide progressive community policing, and that's policing that is not just behind the badge or sitting in a car, but it is, it's policing that is interacting with our community, with our students, with our senior population as best that we possibly can, so that there is a connection and alignment between our policing in our community and our citizens. We've also said that we have to promote appropriate growth and reinvestment in our community. I think that the city council has recognized here in the past few years that our revenues and our needs are not necessarily on the same plane, that it's important that as we go forward, we have to find a way to start growing the revenues beyond the levels that they are currently, and that we need to do, do types of improvements and reinvestment into our community that will allow the community to sort of expand economically so that we can continue to expand the retail base that we have in our community. We all know that property tax is very little of what funds the city's services. It's really a sales tax-driven and growing that sales tax revenue in our community, I think, is something that the city council has all said is very important and something that we need to continue to focus on going forward. And then lastly on this list is to promote sound financial management and maintain an adequate reserve in all of our fund balances. Now, as you know, we, we obviously spend money for a variety of things, things that are needed over the course of the year, equipment and so on and so forth, pumps at our water treatment plant, what have you. But we also need to keep a fund balance, sort of that rainy day fund, if you will, so that, the city council has, has set a goal of trying to keep 25% fund balance in all of our funds, and so that we will have money there, so that if sales tax revenue is not coming in, if you have a, a situation like we did a few years ago with a fire, we can anticipate the needs and continue to operate without cutting services to our community. So maintaining that, that reserve is something that the city council said is very important. So with those policies, those have been the foundation of the budget that we have been working on over the past nine months. It has come together and Harry is going to present that budget to you tonight.
Thank you, Doug. Let me echo the same thing what Doug just said. The city council set up the goals and vision, and we are some means to find out the resources available to accomplish that goals. And with the positive note before we talk about this, my presentation, let me say that city enters in 2016 in a very healthy financial position. As you know, that State of Colorado is expanding their growth from last couple of years. And locally, we have seen some growth in economy in about 4% to 5% over the last two, three years. In 2013, you know, the growth began, but we could not take the advantage because of the fire situation. 14 was the good year for us, and 2015 is also continued to be a good year. But this economy booms, it continues that way. You know that, that economy is not going to last the same way what's been passed, and we have to be very careful, you know, in the future, what we are projecting and what we are trying to spend. So what you will see in our projection is we, we are very conservative in our projection. And also, we are continue monitoring the expenditures throughout the year. It's very important that some of these, you know, highlight I would like to discuss before I go through the summary. One is the sales tax is the, the key for the city, because that's called bread and butter. 65, 70% of our expenditures is based on, on a city sales tax. We are experiencing last two years, little growths in, in sales tax, and that's a good news, because 6% to 7% increase we, we have seen in last two years. Royal George Bridge is also experiencing a good turnout this year. And as a result, we are going to get a lot more revenues than what we expected. Actually, we just received $1.3 million check, you know, in October, and we are expecting another $600,000, $700,000 in January. So we will end up, in our projection, that we will have at least $2 million this year from the Royal George Bridge, which is a good news. We are not borrowing any money, you know, for last couple of years. That's because our financial condition is much better. We refinanced city hall two years back, 2013, and we saved $381,000. As a result, in 2014, we were able to pay for the Main Street project. And in next eight years, we will be debt-free for city hall. So that's another good news. We are not asking for any increase, a rate increase on our water rates, and also not on the stormwater rates. Economic development, city council made the decisions, you know, for developer not to charge any, any building permit fees or sales and use tax, and that continues in 2016. So because our financial position is in good shape, we can accomplish all this, what we outlined. Our goal in this budget, and, and city council also outlined this, the safety is most important. So you will see that public safety budget is about 35% of the total, you know, expenditures. We are focusing on capital improvements a lot, and that's because council would like to spend a lot more money in capital projects than ever. And we, and I will show that we are doing that from last few years. We are also reducing our personnel budget, and you will, we'll demonstrate that, that we have reduced over the year our personnel budget. And open communication is very important for the city hall. And we have good customer service, and we, we have heard from the locals that our communication with the public is, is extraordinary. With that to say, let me start with this budget. The first slide, what you have here is a comparison between 2015 budget and what we are proposing in 2016. Very first column is identifying we're maintaining several funds within, within the activities what we have. General fund is the main funds. When any resources are legally not allocated here in any other funds, that is allocated here in general fund. So that is a primary fund for us. Special revenue funds are, there are four different types of funds. That means the, the resources available for these funds are used for specific purpose, and that is legally required for us to use that resources for these purpose only. For example, parks improvement funds, when we receive the money from the Royal George Bridge, 20% Bridge, 20% of our revenues under the charter are required to use for the park improvement funds. So we always allocate that funds at least 20%.
Harry, that's a minimum, right?
That's a minimum. But also, we are funding the full, you know, expenditures for to maintain that funds for the Royal George Bridge money what we receive. And I'll show you what the allocation is. Conservation trust funds is coming a lottery fund from the state, and that has to be used for the parks-related activities. Library donation funds, that is a grant-related funds, and whatever the grant for the library we receive, we account for in the library donation funds. And museum donation fund, again, whatever the donation we receive, we are accounting for within this fund. For example, if we have 1% sales tax increase pass, we will be creating another fund here, and we will be accounting for all the resources from this 1% increase will be in the separate fund, and also all the expenditures what we make will identify within this fund. So it will be identified separate in the specific revenue fund or within the capital project funds. Quality of life funds, we are accounting for all the grant-related projects is accounted here in quality life funds. So these are all the government activities. Enterprise funds is a water fund, raw water and stormwater fund. This is like a private entities. This is totally different than the general funds or special revenue funds, because the revenue generated from here is from the water charges and the fees, and the expenditures related to there has to be accounted for within this fund. So you cannot, you know, you cannot move the funds from water fund or stormwater fund to the general fund. All the resources available in water fund, enterprise fund, has to stay within the enterprise funds. Internal service fund is a self-insurance fund. City maintains medical, vision, dental, short-term disability, long-term disability, and that activities and paying for the claim is accounted here in self-insurance fund. So overall, we are proposing the $24,369,646 proposed budget for 2016. Current year budget is $23,122,330. That is a difference of 5.39%. Let me go over with the general fund. General fund is current year budget is $11,288,319. We are proposing $11,853,856. That is equal to 6.52% increase compared to the 2015 budget. There has a little bit more, because that includes the, we are spending lot more money in capital projects. We are also experiencing workers' compensation claims are very high in the last few years. So we are projecting that we will have 10% increase in workers' compensation cost. The good news is, when we develop this budget, we plan for 10% increase. But now, we apply for the, with the SARS, which is the workers' compensation pools, and they have accepted our claims, our applications, and we will be saving at least $50,000 by moving from the current carrier to the SARS. So we will, instead of 6.52% difference, when we finalize the budget, it will be less than 6% difference between the two years proposed budget. We also have in this budget, you just approved the reclassification for the police department salary. So that reflects here in this year, which is not in 2015 budget. We also proposing 3% merit increase in this budget too. We also have CRCA, the communication, you know, budget for $479,000. We have included in this budget, which is not in 2015 budget. So there are certain things, what is included in the 2016 budget compared to 2015 budget, that resulted in a 6.52% increase. Park improvement fund, you can see that one is a largest increase, 22% increase. That is because we are allocating lot more funds next year from the Royal George Bridge revenues, because as you know, that city has, the tree problems are removed, the bad trees throughout the cities in the public right away, and we have to solve that problem. Parks Director Rex has identified that we will need at least $700,000, $800,000 over the time, few years to take care of the tree problems. We cannot do in one year. We are allocating about $275,000 in next year budget for removing the trees.
Just to kind of explain that, just so everyone, and particularly people watching at home are aware, is that all the trees in town that sort of are between the sidewalks, if you will, and the curb are all public trees. In other words, everybody in the community owns those trees, if you will. Some communities, in effect, pass the responsibility for those trees on to the people that have the adjacent properties. That has not been done here in Canyon City, so the public, the city, in other words, is still responsible for taking care of all those trees. We knew, here in the past year, we've had a number of diseases that have gone through Canyon City, and we've been trying to take down some of those trees that were diseased that died as a result of those diseases. You may recall that in November of this past year, the temperature went from about 80 degrees one hour to about 20 degrees in a matter of minutes, almost. And what happened is that many of those trees, those public trees, and this probably happened on private property as well, had not prepared themselves for the winter yet because the weather had been so warm, and as a result, we had massive kill of trees throughout the community. For example, you can look out here in front of City Hall, we had some very nice trees out here. At least one of them is gone, and probably another one is going to be gone before too long. But that's happened all over the community. So the city is responsible for those trees, and we have to take a lot of those trees down, because they will come down on cars, they will come down on fences. We've had that happen already, this caused property damage, people's houses. So obviously, that's a big concern and something that we have to deal with.
City faces two major problems. One is a street, which we are trying to solve the problem, and another is a tree problem. And we thought, since we have some extra revenue coming from Royal George Bridge, let's use, you know, solve the tree problems whatever we can in the next year budget. And as a result, we have added about $275,000 in next year budget. Conservation trust funds, again, that is strictly lottery money, and that is used for the park-related activities. Library donation funds is nothing but just a donation from public and the grants what we receive from the state. Museum donation fund also only $1,500. That's just we are anticipating some donation from public. Quality of life fund, we, again, this is the grant, you know, related projects, and we have identified $1.6 million capital project in these funds. And that is much larger expenditures than what we have in the current year. Water funds, you don't see, there is a 3.78% decrease in the overall expenditures. That is because we are not anticipating any major capital project in water fund. Raw water, $35,500, that's only a portion of these, 14% of our TAF is allocated there and for the purpose of buying water rights. Stormwater utilities is $670,000, 12% decrease than the current year budget. And the self-insurance fund is all but the claims, what we are anticipating in $3,219,714. You have to, just I want to point out here, that the total premium out of 30% is paid by the employee, and 70% of the premium is paid by the city. And that is accounted for here in self-insurance fund. Talk about the general fund revenues. You can see the three highlighted area is the major source of revenues in general fund. First is our taxes. 2015, we are estimating $7,451,320. We budgeted, we estimated that $7.1 million. We are experiencing a little bit growth in sales tax. We close about $300,000 more than what we anticipated. And we are projecting slight increase in 2016 budget, $7.6 million. Now, this taxes is not all the property tax. This is all the sales tax, use tax, and franchise tax. Really, cities' property tax is only $380,000, which is extremely low, 2.9 mils. For household, you will say about $30 to $40 a year for $150,000 how actual value of the house. That is extremely low property tax we have in the city. But we are heavily relying on the sales tax and use tax revenues, because if that is not, and that is fluctuating every year, this is our projection. If the projection don't get well, and we thinks, you know, that next year, we are not getting 7.6 what we projected, and we will have only 7.1 million, $7 million, then we have to cut the expenditure accordingly during the year. Intergovernmental fund is all road and bridge money, is a primary source of revenue there. Highway user's tax is another source of revenue here, what we receive from the state. And the Royal George Bridge is the another highest source of revenue in general fund. And you can see that we have projected $193,000 here in 2015 budget, but we are estimating $1,081,000, because we are receiving lot more money than what we anticipated when we prepared the budget in 2013, and we are using this money to pay for the capital projects. And one of the things we will be paying out of this money is, city council approved to borrow the money, $600,000, from the cemetery funds to pay for the main project, Main Street project. Because we are receiving this extra money this year from Royal George Bridge, we are not going to borrow the money what was authorized to us. Instead of, we will pay a $600,000 project for the Main Street here in 2016. So we will not be borrowing any money from the cemetery fund for the next year. This pie chart shows how we are depending on the sales and use tax. You can see the total, out of total revenue, 65% of the revenue is coming from the sales and use tax. Very important. If this, and this is fluctuating, that most of the cities have property tax, they have fixed income coming, and they know, you know, how to budget. Canyon City is depending on sales tax. How is the local economy depends on how we spend money. So we are lucky last two, three years, but that economy cannot continue, and we have to be very careful about this projection. This is very conservative projection, but you never know what the local economy will be. Our past history shows that normally we get about 2% to 3% increase every year, and that's what we are projecting for next year. You can see here, 11 years' history of sales tax. We have good years and a bad year. You can see that 2019 to 2012, four year was not good year. We started in 2006 was not a good year, then we catch up in 2007 and 2008, and then 2009, 10, 11, 12 was kind of a flat year, there was a recession years. Even though this year, we are surviving, we never cut any services. We continue have a same level of services regardless of what the fluctuation is, because we are saving the money when we have a good year to keep up with this, these changes in the fluctuation in the sales tax. And you can see here, in 2014, again, we got a good jump, the growth, we saw that. 2015 looks likely better, and 2016, we are estimating slight growth that will continue until, but you cannot project that continuation will happen in 2017 and beyond. You can see here, general fund, again, the same repeat, you know, 2009 to 2012 was pretty flat, and you can see that '12 to '15 and '16, here we are seeing the slow growth here in the local. That's about 4% to 5% growth. Here is the Royal George Bridge allocation. Royal George Bridge, we are anticipating $2,650,000. And the first thing what we do here when we allocate the money, that first applies to pay for the park improvement funds. Again, minimum requirement is at least 20% of these $2 million has to use in park improvement fund. But we are paying for the entire cost to pay for the operation of the park improvement fund, that is about $709,000 in 2015. Then we pay for the city match for all the grant-related projects in quality life fund, and that is $275,000 in 2015. And the remaining balance applies to the general fund. So in this case, in 2015, general fund gets about $1 million out of $2,650,000. But things change in 2016. We are anticipating little bit less than what the current year is, about $1.9 million from the Royal George Bridge revenues. Out of that, we talk about that, we are spending lot more money for this tree removing. As a result, we have to allocate lot more resources here, $1,095,000 in park improvement fund. Then, we are applying about $585,000 to pay for the city's match, for the grants, $1.9 million grants, we have, $1.6 million grants. Out of that, about $400,000. Out of that, about $400,000 is the city match. And we are using $585,000 for entire city match here. And the remaining balance will apply here in general fund, that is $290,000. So you can see how the general fund fluctuates in the Royal George Bridge money. Current year, we are able to allocate $1 million, but next year, we might not able to do that. Here is the history of the Royal George Bridge revenues and the attendance. The blue mark shows very, you know, continuously about more than a million dollars, very same amount over the years, 1.3, 1.2, and we have seen biggest jump here in 2015, $2 million. But if you look at the green bar, which is attendance, is declining every year. From 2002, about 450,000 people visiting here. In 2000, we end up here, we are projecting, even though even the good year, about 230,000 people. So you can see, the attendance is declining, but the revenue is continuation, is stable. Why is that? Because Royal George Bridge philosophy is, they are adjusting the increase in the admission fee based on the attendance experience in the previous year. Now, this trend might not continue for longer time because at some point, people might not be able to afford the admission cost. So we have to be very careful, what we are seeing here, we might not get every year in the future. We have to be very conservative in our projection. Expenditures. In general fund, you can see that city council's primary focus is public safety. About $4 million out of $11 million budget is allocated to the public safety, that is about 35% of the total budget. And another 17 or 18% of budget, we are allocating to the street projects. And you can see, last few years, we are continue allocating about $1 million more than, we budgeted $1.5 million for current year, we are estimating we will closing by $1.6 million and we are budgeting next year, $1.9 million. In 2014, we only spent $276,000. Here is the list of all the capital improvement, $1.9 million. Only thing I want to point out here, that city council promise that we'll continue budget $400,000 for the street reconstruction or overlays or maintenance every year. And we have included that in the next year budget too. But in top of that, because we are experiencing increase in our sales tax and we are experiencing increase in Royal George Bridge money, we have allocated additional $311,000 in next year budget for the street projects. Now, what we are not saying which street would be, that will be a council to decide, but that money is allocated here in the part of the capital projects for the street. All other projects are the council goals and vision, you know, that for the economic development in the city. And the main project here is US 50 corridor design, $300,000. We are also putting about $100,000 additional dollar for Mecon Plaza improvements. We also have $200,000 on a 16th Street Design and Slip Lane and also $250,000 for park on new stabilization. So all these projects amount to be about $1.9 million. This one is showing the comparison between the 2015 budget and 2016 budget in each classification of the expenditure categories. Primary categories are personnel services and office supplies and purchase services and capital outlay. And you can see the purchase personnel services is declining 3.4%. Keep in mind, this include in 2016 budget is reclassification plus 3% increase in merit increase, even though the total budget is declining about 3.4%. Supply budget also is very minor, not significant compared to $11 million budget, but still it is 2.3% less than the current year budget. Purchase services is about 34.8% more, but because the CRCA budget is included here in this line item, or $478,000 is included here in this category. And that's the reason this shows about 34% increase in this line item. Debt service, City Hall is the only, you know, the debt payment what we have and that is declining because of the payment as you, you know, pay off and the payment goes down. Grants, 34% increase in the grants and capital is 21.8% increase in compared to the 2015 budget. So overall budget is 6.5% increase compared to the 2015 budget. Here is the two comparison for 2015 budget and 16 budget. You can see, the public safety is about 34.27% of the total budget. In 2016 and 2015, we allocated 34.35%. You can see, this is the same level of services, same level of the fundings what we are allocating in both years. That's one of the council goal, is that at least 35% of the total budget has to be in the public safety and that's what we are representing here. And another highlighted is capital outlays. You can see that 15% of the budget in 2015 is allocated here in capital programs and in 2016, we have 18.12% or $2.1 million allocated for capital. And this is another comparison between two years and you can see the personnel service is down. Here, green bar, here supplies is little less, purchase services is up because of the CRCA budget, but highlighted is the capital outlay and you can see that there is a significant increase compared to the other bars. Grants are same and debt service is the same amount. Here is the interesting analysis here. You can see here, over the 2009 to 2016, personnel budget, we start, we used to spend about 68.5% of the total budget in 2009 was the personnel budget. That dropped down in 2011 to 66%. Slowly it increased in 2012 and then it gradually go down. In 2016, we have only 56.1% of the total expenditures in personnel budget. In contrast, you can see, the capital budget is significantly increased over the years from 6.7% to 12.7% and now 18.1%. So this is what the council wants to do and that's what we are accomplishing.
That in, as Harry pointed out, that was the council's goal, is to try to get as much money into the capital project as we could. You'll notice in 2014, that the personnel took a blip back up where capital went down. Well, if you recall, that was the year following the fire and we just didn't know what the revenue situation was going to be. So at that time, the city council cut back on projects to make sure we would get through the year. But you see in the following year, it went back to the direction the council wanted to go and so.
Here is the, our fund balance allocation. Now, total fund balance seems to be about $5 million, you know, in total. But all is not available because here is we have accumulated over the years. This is about 10 years, that's what I was talking about, that we need to accumulate some funds for the emergencies. We need to accomplish what council wants to do, something for future. And this is what, $1.8 million we have assigned for property acquisitions. And this is not overnight, this has been accumulating slowly, say 100,000, 50,000, whatever is available every year from last 10 years and we end up now, $1.8 million. Committed is that council made, committed by legally, you know, to identify about $600,000 here for Royal George Bridge capital program. Under the contract, lease contract, we have committed that. And that's what we have, majority of the commitment here. Restricted is the, under the table, we have to, you know, set aside about $278,000 is a restricted for the table restriction. Non-spendable is all the inventory items, 132,000. So remaining balance is only $2.3 million. That is available for the future appropriation. And that's what, that is equal to about 25% of the total revenue what we have anticipated in next year. And we continue maintain that, that's the council goals, we set up that goals many, many years ago and we continue maintaining this, that we at least have 25% of the unassigned fund balance available at all time. That's when, when we have a sales tax revenue, what we don't get, what we anticipated because the economy changed. We are not changing any, we are not reducing any services, but we are using this unassigned fund balance in the bad time. Here is example for that. That our goal is to maintain this yellow line between all our fund balance all the times. And you can see from 2002 to 2016, we always maintain more than 25%, except there was a one year, 2009 was the recession year and we have to use that money to maintain the same level of services. And that time, we had about 18.69% of the emergency funding available at that year. But then, we caught up back and you can see in 2014, we end up about 38.83% of the total available funds. And then we dropped little bit in 2016 by 24% plus, but the key thing is, we are keeping within the, what our goal is, which is between 20 and 25%. If this continue goes down, that will worries me, you know, that this should stay within this borderline. Here is the just financial information about the park improvement fund, we talk about that, that we are allocating $1 million here in Royal George Bridge revenues and we are spending $1.1 million and $60,000 out of that is the capital. Conservation Trust Fund lottery money, we are expecting about $90,000 next year, we are spending $95,000. Library donation, we are anticipating revenue $42,000. $35,000 is the grant money and then we are spending here, $52,000. Poly life funds, you can see that we have identified $1.6 million of the capital project here and here is the list of the capital projects. These are all grant funded capital projects. $570,000 is the paving gravel streets for C-Mac projects. Rada House is $79,580. US 50 pedestrian crossing study is about $150,000. Fourth Street Viorec, $350,000. Tunnel Drive Trailhead, $154,000. And Field Avenue Sidewalk is $290,000. That amounts to total $1.6 million. Museum Donation Fund is just a donation from the public, we anticipate about $1,500 next year. And our project, all using $1,500 out of the $6,600 revenues what we will generate. Water funds, you can see, the water fund is doing much better and we are anticipating, we are projecting a reduction in total cost by 3.78%. Again, personnel services is no increase, 1% increase overall. Supplies, 2.69% compared to current year budget. Purchase services is declining 4.32% and only the major cost is a debt service and that is $881,000. Capital projects is very, very low, $632,000 compared to, $460,000 compared to $632,000, about 27% decline. We continue allocate, you know, the main, water main replacement for $445,000. Operating revenues, you can see, you know, 2013 was the bad year because of wet year, consumption was less. Same experience, we are anticipating here, current year is a wet year, we are anticipating less revenue than traditionally we get, about $6.3 million. Our projection is 5.7 million. We continue projecting very conservative numbers, 5.8 million. We're not proposing any increase. Water department, water fund is doing much better than ever before. Water expenditures here, you can see, we are spending lot more money in the treatment plant, water distribution. Utility billing is only $126,000, but the major cost is, only another cost is $460,000. And debt service is $881,000. Raw water, again, 14% of the TAF fees is allocated here for acquisition of the water Activity in this one. And stormwater funds is, we are anticipating total revenue sources about $801,000 from the fees and we are spending $670,000 in water utility funds. Self-insurance program, you can see, you know, that we have done good job maintaining this fund from 2002 to 2012. And then we experiencing very large claims in these years, in 2013 and 2014. And you can see that drop down from million dollars, you know, retained earnings to about $300,000. And we did the plan design in 2013 and we are anticipating And we did the plan design in 2013 and we are anticipating, you know, very positive outcome because of the redesign in the plan. And we are back to about 793,000. That's what our projection is in 2016. In our regular employees, you know, population is, majority of our employees are between 50 and 60 years of age. And here in this age, you know, this time they were young. That's why you can see they, we build up, you know, very large retained earnings, but now we are experiencing very high claims. You can see the per capita cost used to be about 2 million, 2,000 dollars per capita in 1997. That now costing about 12,227 dollars per capita cost in, in self insurance program.
So, thank you for that presentation, Harry. So if someone was to make the allegation that you're not being transparent, how would you respond to that?
You know, over the years, what I have done is provide city council as much detail available and we educate city council on a regular basis. As you have seen in the, in the budget process, we start our process in June. We have workshop. We outline at that time what, what we are anticipating throughout the year. We all, we, we ask for your vision, we ask your goals and we help you to find the resources, what is available to accomplish that goals. That's, that's been the traditions we have for over the years. Only my goals and I always preach because of the cities is depending on the sales tax, which is economic cycle. You never know, it's very hard to project what the next year will bring. Luckily, we have last two, three years good. And we are always, and that's always I tell the city council, that you cannot spend what you get every year. You have to put some in the reserve for the emergencies. As a result, we accumulated that funds, 1.8 million dollars. And we always maintain that 2.3 million dollars, 25% of the revenues all the time. That tells us that when they, when we have a bad time, when we don't get the revenue what we anticipated, we are not cutting any expenditures. We are not cutting any services and we continue, you know, provide the same level of services, even it's a good time or a bad time. So that's the good news. I think city is in a good shape. City continue to be in good shape for, for many years, but that is because we have very sound planning, very sensible planning. And that, if that continues, we will, we'll have same result every year. And other things, what I need to point out, that our financial statement has been audited independently by independent auditors. Not only that, we ask outsiders to review our financial statements. And we send out several users, those who are regular users, those who are experts in the industries. In last 20 years, as you have seen, we are, we are receiving the certificate of excellence from the Government Finance Officers Association. That tells us that we are following the laws and regulations what requires. And our auditors has never identified any major deficiencies in our reporting. And that's, that's the good news for the city.
Well, I think that speaks very well to, you know, what you have done with this budget and, and the job that you continue to do. You know, I think that something like this kind of pulls back the curtain and shines a pretty bright light on what the city is doing with their funding. And there, you know, there may be questions that people have, you know, why are you putting more here than you are over here? And, and that might be a valid question, but with respect to transparency, I don't think it gets any more transparent than your explanation here on the budget this evening. And I'd just like to remind everybody, it's online for all to look closely at. And then they may develop some further questions, but, but thank you for the presentation, Harry.
You're right. This is the planning tools, you know, what we project, what, what, you know, we're trying to accomplish what the city council goal is. And this is very flexible. Suppose, you know, council wants to change something during the year, even after the adoptions, they can do that. Only we have to go through the process. That means majority of the vote has to, you know, make recommendations to make a change. But everything is possible. This, this is a planning tool and it's always available to make a change as, as required. Like I say in the beginning, that we are monitoring our budget regularly. Expenditures are monitored on a monthly basis, sometimes on a daily basis. And we notify to the department heads, if we don't anticipate the same level of projection what we have in a month by month, we have done that in the past. We ask department heads not to spend money because cash flow is really important. You got to, you know, have level of comfort before you spend money. So just because we are appropriating this fund, that doesn't mean we have to spend it. That direction is coming on the regular basis, ongoing during the year as we monitor the expenditures.
One thing I'd like to add to that, if I could, is that, you know, transparency in this country, that's a buzzword. You know, everybody's concerned about transparency at every level of government, whether it's our federal government, our state government, even our local governments. But this budget was not developed by staff sort of behind, you know, the, you know, the dark curtain, if you will. This budget was directly in response to what the city council has directed us to prepare. And I think as the elected representatives, it's the city council to say whether or not we've accomplished that objective. If we haven't, then we need to go back and work on it. But if we have, you know, and hopefully we have, you know, it's, it's up to the city council, I think, to be, to be the judge of that. You participate in these conversations every day or every week. The people that might ask questions about transparency may have no participation in this, in this conversation. And the question is for all of you as elected representatives, have we met your objectives? So I would, I would pose that question.
Well, I'd like to add to your comment there, Doug. All of these deliberations were conducted in public meetings. And I think that's very important. I believe we have like 10 people here tonight at our public meeting discussing the budget. Thank you for coming out.
All 10 of you.
All 10 of you. Could I, I'd like to bring up something else. It is a feather in our financial cap, if you will. Do we still have a 4A bond rating, Harry?
Yes.
That is exemplary. Would you like to speak to that a bit?
Yes. You know, the, when we borrow the money, because we continuously saving and putting that, maintaining the reserve all the time, that allow us to get the cheaper, you know, market rate than what the existing market is. And the Standard and Poor, when we borrow the money, we had a double A rating. And then evaluation, they, they do the ongoing evaluation. Every year we send it to them, a rating agency in our, our financial statement. And the last year, we received a letter from Standard and Poor that they increased our rating to triple A because we have sound financial statement.
Right. We are responsible. That's all about.
Well, the city council leadership and sensible planning of management both combines, that makes the difference.
I have one other thing I'd like for us to touch on, if we could. We've on occasion heard some misunderstanding. Certainly this came out at the forums and I'd like for someone to address this. Why our street department budget is 1.9 million, yet we only have 400,000? I think there's some, for repairs. I think there's some confusion around those numbers. If, if you could address that, Doug?
Yeah, well, I, what it boils down to are several things. We have a street department budget of about 1.9 million dollars. Actually, if you look at it, it's a little bit less than that in the, in the 16 proposed budget. But, you know, what that boils down to is that it's, it's staffing salaries, it's all the benefits for our department. It's all the contract services that they do. Now, they do repairs for, you know, projects that they will contract that service out. That's in that number. All of their, their other supplies. Keep in mind that they do a whole variety of things. They don't just go out and patch potholes, for example. They have a concrete, they do a lot of concrete work in this town. They replace sidewalks. You know, they do all kinds of, of work for our community. All that work is accounted for in that 1.9 million dollar budget. In addition, or a part of that 1.9 million dollar budget, they have 400,000 that they use in materials, okay? Now, that materials, those materials are used to go out and reconstruct some of our streets. The labor that goes, I think council member Ketchmar pointed this out at a previous meeting and it's an important point. The labor that goes in to doing that work is all part of that 1, 1.9 million dollars as well. So they're doing a lot of things with that, that work. It's just that they have 400,000 of materials to, to carry out that street reconstruction work. So it's, 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 you have to look at and try to understand all the pieces, what's in that 1.9 million dollars. But, you know, the one thing that I think that has come out of all of this is that, that, you know, hopefully, we have met the objectives of the city council in terms of preparing this budget. There are questions about how we use the, the revenues from the Royal Gorge Park and Harry hit on some of that tonight. There are a lot of things that our community does and from, you know, people don't even think about it, dead trees. You know, unless you set up here at this counter, it's probably one of the last things that you think about. City takes care of those trees and we remove those trees from people's property so they do not do damage to their, their own private property, just as an example. But, you know, that goes into, to our parks and maintaining our parks. You know, a lot of people probably don't think about that. They think, well, we just get this money from the Royal Gorge Park, why can't we use it for our streets? It goes a long ways. It covers a lot of things and services for our community. So, you know, there are some other things that I think are probably important in that whole conversation. If you take, and there's a, there's a, a council message that's been posted on the website just for, for information on, on this sales tax increase, because this is a big conversation in the community. The, the sales tax increase, the sales tax rate increase, you know, would be going to strictly fix up our, our streets. But when you take a look at all the revenues that Harry was talking about today in our general fund and in that, that document from the city council, it, it talks about how much revenue we get per capita in our community. And somebody brought this up in a letter to the editor kind of early on in this conversation. Do we really have enough revenue? And in our general fund, if you take a look at the, the revenues that we bring into our general fund, per capita, so in other words, per person in our community, we are lower than Florence, Salida, Pueblo, or any of the other communities around. Our revenues are lower. So in effect, what we're trying to do here, I think, and, and you guys can be the judge of this, and the community can be the judge of this, is we are trying to do a lot of work to improve this community with not a lot of resources. And I think that that's something that, you know, it's, it's really overlooked. It's very easy to say, well, why can't you use, you know, this, the, the revenues from the, the Royal Gorge Park, for example. But if you look at everything that's in this budget and all the improvements that are being done, it's going a long ways with what we have available. People ask the question, well, why are you investing money into the downtown? Why don't you put that money into the streets? If you put that money into the streets, that money would, would maybe replace three, four, five blocks of streets. We have 115 miles of streets and half of those, you know, over 50%, almost 60% of that is in need of reconstruction or significant work. It's a drop in the bucket. And so the, the, the tax revenue that's being proposed, which I think the city council concluded was about the most that we as a community could really afford at 1% is still not enough to cover all the street improvements that we need to make in this community. So where's the rest of that money going to come from? And I think the city council has recognized this going back several years, that the way it's going to have to happen is we have to figure out a way to grow that sales tax pie that Harry was talking about up here on the board. And the way that has to happen is that we have to improve the business climate, we have to prove access to business, we have to fix up our downtown so that their businesses will want to locate in our downtown so that we can go there and shop. And when we do and spend money, that sales tax revenues will go back into the pot so we can add that as well to our streets. And so there, again, as we've said in the past, there are many pieces to solving this puzzle and it's not as simple as saying, well, let's take the revenue from the Royal Gorge Park and put it into our, our, our streets. We have a significant problem here. We don't have a lot of revenue coming in per person and we have to make the most that we possibly can with the revenues that we have. And equally important, we have to figure out a way to grow our economic pie for our future. And so when the, when the community asks the question about this sales tax revenue, you know, in this budget that Harry has talked about here tonight, we have not anticipated that this will pass. This is basically taking what we have and going forward. If the money, if, if, if the budget or if the tax rate increase is passed in November, what would happen, as Harry pointed out, all of that revenue will start accumulating January 1 over the year into a separate fund that will be set aside specifically for road improvements, not anything else. The voters, when they, if they pass this, they're very specific that it's only going to go to roads. And so we will have a fund next year on this budget that will say road fund and it would have hopefully 3.5 million dollars setting in it, ready to go for our streets. Well, the citizens ask the question, well, how can we be assured that that money will be used for streets? Harry addressed that. That each year, we have an independent audit that goes through every part of our books. And this is not somebody that, that, you know, the staff hires, for example. This is an independent auditor that comes in, takes a look at our books. And if they find that those revenues are being used for something else, that will be brought out in the audit report very, very clearly. The good thing about our community, and I've been around other communities and I've seen this, when the auditors come in, it's very common that the auditors will have a report that will have a number of things that need to be addressed or should be addressed as part of our budget. That doesn't happen here. Our audits have had almost no comments on them for years because I think our, our financial reporting is, is so good. You know, to the finance department's credit on that. But, but the, but the assurance is there for the, the citizens, that that audit report would make sure that those revenues are going to go to where they're, where they've, they're supposed to go to. The other part of that is, you know, questions, it's come up about this question about, well, why didn't we, the, the city council sunset this? In other words, why didn't they put a timeframe of 10 years in which this revenue would be generated and then after that it would go away unless the, the citizens voted on it again? And I'm going to try to summarize what I believe the city council stated, and you can correct me if this is wrong. But I think it was several points. Number one, that the problem that we have is not a 10-year problem, it's a long-term problem. And that we're going to need revenues to go back into those streets over a longer period of time, not just 10 years. That the council gave a commitment to the citizens as part of this question, that this money, if it is approved, would only go into our streets. It's not going to go into personnel costs, it's not going to go into stationary or paper It's not going to go into personnel costs, it's not going to go into stationary or paperclips or anything else, only into our streets. And so, the audit, then, as I mentioned earlier, would ensure that that's going to be the case. And that the citizens, only the citizens can change any of those provisions. So, the staff or even the city council at some point in the future cannot arbitrarily say, "We're going to take that money now, and we're going to put it into paperclips." Can't happen. It would have to go back to the citizens someday in the future to change that. So I think that what the council tried to do is that they recognize that this is a long-term problem, sunsetting it was not necessarily part of the answer. We need the revenues long-term, but we need to make the commitment to the citizens that that's how the money is going to be used going forward. And so, hopefully, you know, the citizens would agree with that. Obviously, we would find out in November if that is the case. I think the city council has been very clear from day one that no one wants to increase taxes. Nobody at this table or probably in the audience wants to increase taxes in any way, shape, or form. But the only way that we're going to solve our problem is probably take some step like this. And we know that there are people that would prefer, you know, not to have to put the money into our streets. And, you know, I was thinking about this today. Gosh, what if I didn't put money into our streets? I'm the beneficiary today of all those people that came before me that put the money into the streets. I get to enjoy them. But if I don't put the money into the streets, all of our children, our grandchildren, everybody that comes after us, do not get to enjoy what we're going to leave for them. We're going to leave a mess for them. And that would be quite unfortunate, I think, for our community. So I think that's kind of a summary of what the city council has stated with regards to this increase. And hopefully, the community will take a good, hard look at it and really try to understand the revenue situation that has been presented here, how much revenue that we really have. We don't have a lot of revenue in our community, and again, I think that, as has been pointed out here, we're trying to make the best of what we have and make it go a long way. So, Colby?
So, Doug, if we did get this 1% passed and we accumulated that money, we're not proposing to increase the size of our street department, but we would be contracting out the vast majority. The street department would continue doing what they do in the community, and the overage would go to contract out for street repairs. Is that what I understand?
That's absolutely right. And I think that that's one of the policies that we talked about pretty early on, is that the council said, "We don't want to grow the government," you know, anymore. We like what we have. We're efficient, we cut staffing over a period of time. What we do know is that if we can continue to cut staffing, what happens is that you've got to make up that work somewhere, so you end up farming it out to the private sector. So what happens is you cut one expense and replace it with another expense. That's the point that we're at now. And so, we want to try to keep it at the level. That's your direction. And yes, the work would be contracted out to the business sector in our community, and hopefully, it will create long-term jobs by doing that. Long-term paychecks. If we have long-term paychecks, they go to the restaurants, they buy things, and it generates sales tax.
Let me point out one thing. The independent auditors. Independent auditors are hired by city council. Staff has nothing to do with that. And they are supposed to directly report to the city council. So if we have any findings, or if we are not following the rules and regulations and laws, and if they find that we are violating the laws, then they will not approach to us, they will not tell us anything, they will directly report to the city council. And that's very important, to know, for public to know, the violations of law is not in our control. That will be directly reported to the public. And the second thing is, in the street, I think it's important to know that inflationary cost to, you know, to maintain and spend that for the construction of the street increase 8% to 10% every year. So today, if we are spending a million dollars to do the one mile street, that might cost in five years 1.5 or 1.2 million or 1.3 million dollars. And the cost to borrowing will increase over the time period as the impression goes, you know. So we have to be very careful that, you know, the street problem is going to continue, and somehow, that needs to be addressed. And what we have offered to the public is the best way, you know, to handle that, that the entire burden doesn't go to the local, you know, that is shared by everybody who are, you know, coming here in town, and you have seen that Royal Gorge Bridge, you know, is, actually, we are getting about 300,000 people every year. We need to make sure that people spend money here. That's the attraction. We have to find a way to make the people stay here in town, spend the money, and that will help us to solve our problems.
Quick question to Harry. So, I know people have talked to me, and I just want to bring it up, the raising property tax. And raising property tax would never really sufficiently fix the roads. We'd have to raise them drastically. And could you maybe touch on that a little bit?
Not only you to raise drastically, but also that penalize only for the locals.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, that's one of the keys. With respect to the property tax, it would be a significant, you know, increase in what people are paying with respect to their property. But that point right there, the last point that Harry made, is very, very important. What that does do is it means that everybody that lives in our community is going to take on the obligation for fixing our streets, or the responsibility for fixing our streets. Even though there are many, many, many more people besides our residents that use our streets. There are people that drive through, that go to Salida, for example, they're using our streets. There are people that come into our community, that whether they're coming here to do business, they're coming here to visit people, whatever, they use our streets. And so, all, by doing a sales tax, or a sales tax rate increase, what that does do is it takes the burden, if you will, and expands it to a much greater population. Because if somebody comes from Colorado Springs and comes here and buys a hamburger, they're driving on our streets, they're contributing to our solution. Otherwise, it's just the people that live here. But it's a very important point.
Yeah, I think we did a figure on that one time. If we went strictly property tax, we'd go from like, I think it was 2.9 that we are now to something like 29.6.
Yeah, 30 mils.
Really wasn't an option.
No.
Every year.
All right. I had a couple of comments, too. This is, going back to Doug, or it's been mentioned, the, there's no sunset provision in this sales tax increase. This, if this is approved, obviously, this is going to be a citizen voter-approved sales tax increase. And in reality, there is no such thing as, at least in this case, a permanent increase in the sales tax. This would be approved by citizens, and the citizens, the voters of this town, would always retain the ability and the option to put it on the ballot again and rescind the sales tax, if that was the course of action they wanted to take. And, you know, obviously, that's not an action we'd like to see. Citizens in this town, in the past, have had an opportunity to rescind a sales tax, and they chose not to do that, because I think they realized that the city council and city staff were being very responsible in the way those funds were used. But it's like, so the message here is, there is no sunset, but that doesn't mean it could not be rescinded. Obviously, that would not be something that we'd be looking forward to. And there's one other issue that I just wanted to address, just because I think it needs to be addressed. It has been suggested that by manipulating our budget or reallocating funds, with our current budget, we have the funds available to fix our streets. Would you care to address that? Is that even remotely possible?
We don't have revenue for that level available to at least maintain the street even, you know. Like I said, it costs a million dollars to do one mile street. And you can see, we don't have a million dollars available. And even though if we use that emergency fund, what we have, $2 million, that you can do for one year, $1 million. But our problem is 115 miles, you know? That much money is never going to be available, and this is not our problem. This is, every city faces the same problem. This is a major cost, you know, for any government to, you know, spend. And it is very difficult to come up with that kind of money available. Now you can fix by relocating funds, you know, another half mile, or maybe in a quarter mile every year, and slowly, slowly. But then, in five years, you might have one or two miles you have fixed, or three miles fixed it. But you don't able to fix 115 miles, you know? And that's the point here.
The short answer is, no. It's not possible. And if we allocated 100% of our entire city budget for the next 15 years and provided no services, so, it's not even...
I mean, that becomes the key right there, is that, yeah, if you take the revenue and put it into the streets, you're going to significantly alter the municipal government and services in this community. They are going to go away. There's just no other choice.
I don't think there's anybody on the city council that, at least I don't, anyway, I've never met a tax I like. This is just one of those things, we're kind of in a corner. You know, either we, I don't know, not a person here, at least I know Pat and I, in the last eight years, has a month gone by that we haven't fielded at least two or three complaints about worsted out roads, potholes, sides of the streets crumbling, we can't ride our bikes. I mean, it doesn't go away. We know they're bad. We just didn't realize how bad they were until we had the study done, you know?
Okay. Well, let's move on. We've got one more item on the agenda. Oh, sorry. Are there any further comments from the audience on this subject? Anybody have anything they'd like to say? That being the case, I will close this public hearing and move to the last item on the agenda, which is citizens' requests to speak to council. Kathy, do we have any requests?
Received one, written request to speak to council, and that's from Manny Cullen. 3175 Granvu Avenue has to speak to council in regard to water.
Well, I'm here to represent the Canadian City Hydraulic and Irrigating Ditch Company. The issue I'd like to talk about is stormwater. And basically, what I'm requesting is to be put on the agenda for the next public service meeting that you have, I think in November. I'd like to speak there, if I may, and go into a little more detail about the issue. I guess I have four and a half minutes here. I could go on with it and give you a little overview. The main thing is, is we, as we continue to build north of the hydraulic ditch, this really applies not only to the city but to the county, so everything I say includes the county in this. But as we continue to grow, we continue to get more and more stormwater into the ditch. The ditch wasn't designed to handle the stormwater that we're getting now, and it's becoming a real strong risk to the stockholders, of which the city is the largest one. And we did have a couple of years ago, a $10,000 washout based on stormwater that we had to repair. And our records show that, if you go back into the ditch records in 1952, we were coming before the city with the same problem, and nothing has been done since 1952 to alleviate the amount of stormwater. In fact, it's increasing. And there's a progressive rate, or proactive rate to take, or defensive rate. And maybe I should share with you that one of those, the ditch company, we did go to the Roundtable, Arkansas Valley Roundtable, which I'm a member of, and we applied for a grant, and I got the grant approved for $350,000 to put it into aluminum three gates and be able to dump water at various times during the storm at key locations. That grant was turned down because they, when I got to Denver at the Colorado Water Conservation Board, they said that is a city and county problem. These funds should not come out of the state water supply fund, they should come out of the stormwater funds, and there is money available. In fact, they said we would put up $20,000 to help study the problem right there on the spot. I came, I had to have the approval and worked with the city and county, and it seems like that's a very difficult thing to do. So, at this public workers' meeting, I would like to address that. I would like to have the city and the county step up the bat. If not, then we're going to have to take some defensive moral routes, and that would be to follow the state law and not accept stormwater. You have a real problem with the WPA ditch. You have the worst problem at the Orchard's ditch, where you've crossed in, where you've actually dumped more stormwater, and then our ditch can hold just from that one drain. And you can see in the storm, I have numerous pictures and stuff that show the overtopping east of there. We have another problem at the Abbey Storm Detention Pond, and its utilization, it was designed to actually hold back water and prevent flooding from the people downstream on Rhodes Avenue. It is not set up that way, it is not working, and those people have continued to be flooded when there is a small storm because it is set up for a larger storm. When I talked to your city engineer, he says that's the state's responsibility to change that orifice, and they haven't. And so, it should be designed to be able to hold all the water until what it comes in is it becomes a threat and then start to release slowly. Right now, it just releases everything that's going through. And so, that's a real issue I'd like to talk about. We do need your cooperation. If not, we're going to have to start putting sideboards on the ditch at the key locations the stormwater's coming in and top it over the side. And right down on the city, that's going to create some problems. And as I mentioned, it's illegal to accept the stormwater, and that's the state law. One other thing, I was very fortunate to be here when the budget's presented, I see where you have looked at your 13% cut in the stormwater utility fund. That is something that is negative on my side. I can't see where that's going to be beneficial to us. And the other thing, I see $100,000 for bridge crossings. Bob Solomon and I crawl through every crossing you have in town, and that includes not only the streets but the alleys. We set up a plan at that time to fix a crossing every year, and numerous times, those funds have been rerouted for another problem and not used to cover a ditch crossing. And you've had one accident already where a bus went into the, no, a garbage truck broke through and went into the ditch, and that cost an awful lot of money and a five-year lawsuit. So, all I say is, I hope it's never a school bus that falls through. I'm out of time. Do you have any questions? Me?
Manny, the next public workers' meeting is November 18th. Is that one you want to put him on for? November 18th, 4 o'clock.
And that's held where?
It's held here, right here.
The adjacent room.
On the other side.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have one other item that I'd like to go ahead and bring up. Lisa's had Pete the Guide Dog here for many, 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 many meetings, and this is Pete's last council meeting, and she will be sending him off to California to see if he's going to graduate his next step. So, Lisa has asked me to go ahead and give her just a few minutes, or Pete, a few minutes of hurrah here.
Anyway, I want to thank all of you for contributing to Pete's training, because it's not a person that raises a guide dog, it's a community. It's... It's everyone working together, it's you allowing Pete to be here at city council meetings, it's the restaurants, it's the grocery stores. I know it's state law, he's allowed, but still, everyone's cooperation helps to benefit Pete's success. So Pete wants to thank you all, and I know you normally don't endorse candidates, but he has a button that says Pete for Guide Dog, and he'd like to give one to each and every one of you, so that you can support his next step in becoming a guide dog. He will go back to the school, where he will receive a temperament examination to make sure that his temperament is that. I can assure you, he is well on his way there. After that, he gets about $5,000 worth of medical exams to make sure that he is physically sound to become a guide dog, because they will put another $20,000 worth of training into him from the time he goes to school, and then when he graduates with his blind partner in the spring of next year. And obviously, they don't want to put that additional $20,000 in unless they know he's physically sound. They can't do the physicals before now, because they have to make sure he's mature to know that. So he has a little road ahead of him. I won't see him after next Saturday, when I say goodbye. And the journey begins again. We start with a new pup. And people ask me every day, oh, I would love him too much to give him up. You must not care. They're wrong. But the answer is, Kathy, when people ask me how I can do it, my answer is, how can I not? How can I not let him go to do something amazing for another person? So if I can step around, I'll give you each a button, because he's wearing them.
And they're magnets.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
He is wonderful. Thank you for sharing him with us.
He was eight weeks old, and that picture was taken in a school chair on the side...
And like, for how many months?
He's my ninth pup.
How many months have we seen him? Have you had him?
Well, I've been here a year now. So you've been in the last year, and he's 18 months old.
There you go. Thanks.
Oh, that's okay. I mean, that's okay.
Well, thank you, Lisa. I'd say, great way to end our meeting. We're adjourned.